Lewis and Clark County, this is the day of October twenty twenty five. Welcome everyone, we'll start by the Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Well. I am Commissioner Vance Payne, I'm the Chair of this meeting today. To my left is Mr. Tom Law.
Good morning.
And to his left is Brandon Grandia, our Reporting Secretary. And to her left is Jenny Chambers, who is Head of our Public Works Department and the Fighting Department. She is big made. To my right is Commissioner Andy Gunhouseen. And to his right is Nico Hesch and TJ Murphy from the County Attorney's Office, keeping us on the letter of the law. To their right, Roger Balls, our C A O. On the table, back to the railing, is a sign-in sheet. We will take time to sign your names in, let us know who's here. And there are agendas if you want to follow along with testimony. Okay, with that, we have an important proclamation today. And this proclamation supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. And it will be read by our Vice Chair Tom Law, who has served his country and we thought it appropriate that he should read it. So, Tom, go for it.
Thank you, Chair Payne. And this is a project of the National Association of Counties. It's a support veterans. And so we've written a proclamation to support the veterans of our community. And it goes into the at call. Whereas the residents of Lewis and Clark County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Lewis and Clark County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for the freedom for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, the National Guard and Reserve, and Fort Harrison Veterans Health Center. And whereas thousands of service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas studies indicate that many service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans. And whereas Lewis and Clark County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it proclaimed with designation as Green Light for Veterans County. Lewis and Clark County hereby declares for November fourth through November eleventh, two thousand twenty five, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of men are men and women in uniform transitioning from active in service. Therefore be it further proclaimed that in a service of Operation Green Light, Lewis and Clark County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition in to recognize the importance of honoring all the locals who made the medical sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights at their place of business or residence. Dated this thirtieth day of October, two thousand twenty five, signed by the Lewis and Clark County Board of Commissioners. Is there a veteran here? Here that would like to? I didn't know whether anybody was here, but we just want, we want veterans to know that we are very supportive of this act of them, appreciate all they've done. And encourage folks to do on the front porch. Put on, put some green light out there so just to let the veterans know that we're thinking about them and we support them. And we're going to have some green lights on the front of the courthouse of the city county building here and some of the other, the buildings operated by the county. And we want to encourage folks to do that.
Thank you, Tom. And you briefly mentioned putting up green lights on our old residence as a sign of support for all of the different neighborhoods. And I've got my green light over it. How about you, Aaron?
I might have been up and burning the last few nights already. I'm getting going early.
I've got to finish my Halloween stuff first. Okay. Well, thank you, Tom. Are we going to need to do a photograph or is that it? Okay, moving right along. Thank you for that proclamation reading for us, Tom. Moving right along, you have Consent Action Item Three A to be presented by.
Thank you, Chair Payne. As you just said, this is item three on the agenda. The first item is item Three A, Resolution Two Zero Two Five Dash One One Three, declaring county property surplus property. Staff recommends approval of that item. The next item is item Three B, it is Resolution Two Zero Two Five Dash One One Four, declaring county property surplus property as well, and staff also recommends approval of this item. Item Three C is also, it's Resolution Two Zero Two Five Dash One One Five, also declaring county property surplus property and staff recommends approval of that item. Commissioners, thank you. That's all we consent action items for you today.
Thank you, Roger. Is there any comments, questions from the Commission? Seeing no comments or questions. Okay, we are not ready for the public comment on the, and this is on the clearing county property surplus property. You guys aren't familiar with groups, are you? Okay, so we've heard the three resolutions. We've asked for comments from the Commissioners. Is there any public comments on this issue? This is public comment only on the surplus property for the county. It has nothing to do with the future issues on our agenda.
I do understand. Jeffrey Norman, what exactly does it rule by declaring county property surplus property? What use can it gain by doing this?
I actually was kind of surprised when I took on this job. I didn't predict. But my way of looking at it is we've got equipment. And if we keep it, it's going to break down and it's going to go in the junkyard. But our public works folks, they take this equipment and I have to look, there's different. This equipment is, oh, these are, this is.
Chair Payne.
Yep.
Could I perhaps help a little bit with this item?
Either you or Larry, Rita. So, Roger, Roger knows.
Well, thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. So, under Montana State law, this is process that county governments are required to go through. For each of these items that were just mentioned today, we must pass a resolution, and it might be helpful if I just read the first part of the resolution, which provides some details. So, whereas Section Seven Dash Eight Two Two One One M C A, that's Montana State laws, it's Montana Code of Statute, authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to sell, trade, or exchange any real or personal property, however acquired, belonging to the county, that it is not necessary to the conduct of the county business or the preservation of its property. And whereas the county property described in these resolutions has been determined by the county commissioners to be unnecessary to the conduct of county business or the preservation of its property. And by such determination has been declared to be surplus property. Now, if I could, what that means is the county commissioners go through this formal process of declaring equipment property. A lot of times it's vehicles, a lot of times it's needs like printers. Sometimes it's furniture. They declare it to be surplus property so that we can either sell it at auction or sell it in some manner to redeem some value from it. And oftentimes that money is then used to replace those items when we replace vehicles. So, they are specifically listed out in each resolution. So, each of these three resolutions that were just read into the record have a specific list. And I'll give you an idea. One of them is a Dell desktop computer. One is an H P desktop scanner. One is a Omnikit. One is, well, we have two A T and T telephones. And all of this information is provided to the Commissioners. It's all public record. It's also on our county website. If you'd like to go and read the list for yourself, we'll do that. And just to give you another example, one of the resolutions that we just read into the record is for us to surplus a two thousand and seven G M C thirty-five hundred vehicle and a two thousand and eight Polaris Ranger seven hundred six by six. They have the milers listed and what we think the auction value will be for these items. So, not to get too off record with this, everyone, but this is a process that the county is required to go through before we take items that are considered to be assets of the county, which means our taxpayers, and then sell them or auction them off and redeem money that we then use typically to replace this equipment. I hope that helps a little bit.
I understood all that. I guess where I was going with this was, does this surplus property include real property like land or photographs or driving ways or anything like that? That's county property also. So, does it include real property, not just stuff?
Chair Payne and Commissioners, if I could. Please do. From time to time, the county does dispose of property. We typically have, again, state law mandated processes that we have to go through to sell it for fair market value and to go through a competitive process to let all parties have a fair opportunity to attempt to buy that property. There are some exceptions, and I know we have our County Attorney's Office here too as well. But there are some exceptions to that, for instance, transfers to other local governments that we are allowed to make from time to time. But typically, these types of resolutions on the county commission agenda in this manner do not involve transfer of property or land.
One final question. Excuse me, if it doesn't pertain to this agenda item. But where do I go to start the process of purchasing possible county property or rights away? Where do I start the process in ownership of that property?
Commissioner Payne, if I could. So, every situation typically that we encounter is probably, I think it would describe it as unique. Oftentimes that process can start by having a conversation with our planning department about whether we actually have any excess property. If property is offered through a competitive process, typically the county will advertise it through what's called an R M P process, Request for Proposal process, that's published on the county website. We also have a procurement office. And I'll be glad to get you their phone number, but on our website, we have a grants and purchasing department that handles how we go about spending taxpayers' dollars. And R M Ps are typically listed on the website under their heading. But also the planning department is a good place to start. I'm not aware of any properties that we have right now that we're offering for sale at this time, but they do come up from time to time. We always get the county commissioners permission before we do that as well, and it's a public discussion.
Thank you, Roger. I think that sums it up better than I could have. The other thing is the items that are listed on the consent action item. Consent action means we have looked at this. This is not a big surprise. It isn't like we didn't read it, but we don't know what's on the list. We do. We take this pretty darn seriously. And so it is a consent action item because we, we don't think anybody is going to object to us getting rid of old outdated or unusable or in they're not as efficient as some of the newer ones. So, we're looking out for the good of our taxpayers by keeping the property, the personal property as functional as possible. And this is how we do it. And we don't take it lightly, and we do read all this stuff before we are sitting up here. But generally, there's no argument or question because we have people who work for, for example, in the, in our Public Works Department down there where they trade off the snowplows. We had a, your recent bad snowplow that we had for a long time, and I think they bought it. Broadwater County bought it. We took the money from that and they paid and bonded a new one that we got, which is newer, more up to date, has more bells and whistles. But that's what they're trying to do and that man right over there, Dan, Dennis, Dan. Okay, and Jenny, I mean, these are the people who actually do work. It's not smoke and mirrors. We don't send them all to California. This is our people in our county and they're looking out for all of us, so.
Okay. And a question to Roger Balls. I would appreciate that list.
For the planning department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who, who, my husband.
Is there any further public comment? Seeing none. Is there any, let's see, we need to have a motion, I believe.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Consent Action Items Three A, Three B, and Three C, all resolutions declaring county property surplus property.
So, it has been moved and seconded that we approved Consent Action Items Three A, Three B, and Three C. Is there any further comment from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor of Consent Action Items Three A, Three B, and Three C by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, safe sign, motion passes announced. Moving right along, we are now at the point where we take our action item. Action Item Four Eighty to be presented by Mr. Dan Carlin, Professional Services Contract Amendment Number One for Lewis and Clark County and Sandbell, formerly Sanderson Stewart. Good morning, Dan.
Good morning. Chair Payne, Commissioners, for the record, Dan Carlin, coming in here. In July of two thousand twenty four, county awarded a contract to Sanderson Stewart, now Sandbell, to design a roundabout improvements to the Custer Anderson intersection. Project encompasses the entire intersection and accommodates future fairground growth. Project is nearing completion, but it will not leave the original contract and date of October thirty first, two thousand twenty five. This project is in cooperation with the Lewis and Clark County Fairgrounds and it utilizes American Rescue Plan Act for ARPA grants funds for the work. Before you today is contract amendment number one, which changes the contract end date from October thirty first, two thousand twenty five to December thirty first, two thousand twenty five. This amendment does not alter the contract price from the original two hundred and seven thousand two hundred and four dollars and eighty cents. Staff recommends the approval of amendment number one with Sandell and not twice the charges.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Is there any questions from the commission?
No.
Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, we entertain a motion.
Chair Payne, I would be approve the Professional Services Contract Amendment Number One between Lewis and Clark County and Sandbell, formerly Sanderson Stewart, as described by Engineer Carlin. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approved this contract. Is there any further comment from the commission? Andy?
I should have asked a question, but it's a little out of order. I apologize if you're.
Of your long years and experience as a commission.
So sorry, if you're, if you're willing, I just thought it was an opportunity and some people may not know what this is about. No problem with the amendment, but just very briefly describing what we're trying to accomplish. Started this process, what, what kind of a general timeline are we on, maybe?
Absolutely. Chair Payne, Commissioner Gunhouseen, so this project, this isolated intersection improvement is going to be designed as a roundabout at Custer Anderson, which is right at the entrance to the fairgrounds and the Ryan Fields area. It is part of the piece of a larger puzzle, if you will, of the Custer project that is being right now, we've had a few hurdles, but we're working toward getting a project off the ground to expand the capacity on Custer from North Montana to the fairgrounds. This is the end piece of it. We had an opportunity with the ARPA funding and with the fairgrounds and with a little cooperation with City Hall and I'd be able to come together, be able to design this improvement, as of now, to be on how construction dollars located, established, budgeted. But we will have this design completed and will be ready to industry, be found and allocated as a construction budget. Either through us or through partnerships or through the city directly. But the main point here is we had an opportunity to get the design done and it will be ready when an entity or combination of entities can fund the construction.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
As long as we're making sure everybody sees what's going on, this is a roundabout. Custer Avenue is mostly Montana Department of Transportation and then some of it is in the city. And the county doesn't have a lot of ownership in that street. However, it's our fair that gets impacted. You, any of you went to the fair last summer. The traffic was just horrendous. We knew that there was a national soft baseball tournament at baseball fields while our fair was going on. The traffic was just awful. We had people out there trying to direct it. And I know that roundabouts are not popular. But they do keep traffic moving and likely will help us. This makes this a shovel-ready project. So, should the time ever come when the Department of Transportation and the city of Carolina actually decide they're going to accomplish something, we'll be ready to help out. Okay, thank you. So, any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the contract amendment number one? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, you announce. Okay. Beg your pardon? Again, so. Miss Crystal, I have a question.
For Chair Payne and Commissioners. Crystal Mass Development Services Supervisor here this morning with three items that we had postponed a decision to today. The meeting, the original meetings were held on October sixteen. I have received an additional comment from one of the property owners that I'd like to give you this morning. This is on the abandonment of the alley in the Hotel Edition.
Just for everyone's information, I received an email and it came in sometime yesterday, but it opened until today. My plan was to print it off. But of course, I'm somewhat computer challenged and I only got one page. Anyway, that will become part of the public record also. It was also sent to the other commissioners and I don't know if you were seeing it, but it's another comment. Chair Payne, thank you very much. Kind of a summary of where we are. So, our, our first item this morning is to abandon the alley in the Hotel Edition. Which is this alley just south of Minister Avenue running east and west. This alley was planted on the eighteen eighty nine plaque. And at that particular point in time jurisdictions, local jurisdictions acquired right of way of these alleys. We have a number of encroachments in these alleys. And we have before us a petition to abandon the alley, this east-west alley. This one right here. I'll turn on the I'll turn on our our aerial. And you can see the number of encroachments that we actually have in this alley. So, this is the alley that we're talking about right here. We had, we had quite a, a number of folks comment on the abandonment of this alley at our last meeting. I would request that you move that, all of those comments forward to this meeting, which is going to be our day for decision. So, before you, you have a motion for a conditional approval to abandon this alley. As part of that conditional approval, there will of course be required to be a survey done and deeds done dividing this alley among the abutting property owners. Our conditional approval has a three-year timeframe. So, should you choose to conditionally approve the abandonment of this alley in the Hotel Edition, it will, they will have three years to actually get it completed. It's not going to be completed until we have a survey and have deeds. And at that point in time, I would prepare a resolution that would actually consummate the abandonment, if you will, and then we will file the survey and the deeds distributing this property to the abutters. Any questions? Abutters, abutters, those properties that abut the alley. Thank you. I don't think I've heard that term before. Chair Payne, have you heard any questions or comments from the commission? Yes, Andy.
Just to be, just to be crystal clear here. This, as you just said, this is beginning of this process. So, if we were to act affirmatively on this proposal here, then just start the process of folks taking their time to really go through the conditions, make sure all the conditions are met. And then it would come back and we'd prepare that resolution that we would then have to act on again to formally. And then it would come back and you prepare that resolution that we would then have to act on again to formally abandon. And they have up to three years to get that done. I just want to be clear that this action today, if we were to act affirmatively, was not abandoned. Sally does not end the process. It is potentially a starting point for this piece of the process.
Chair pain commissioner Hunt House and that's exactly right.
Right.
Until, until everyone affirmatively signs the surveys and the deeds, um, we won't be preparing a resolution and we won't confirm the abandonment of this alley. Okay, may I have a question? When, when you say everyone, do you mean all adjoining property owners or do you mean everyone in that block of? Chair pain, we have, we have two, because we have two additions that come together right here at this northern property line of these lots. Um, this, this particular item is just for this alley, but it will include this property owner, these folks, these folks and these folks. They will all acquire a portion of that alley um, as they have agreed upon and as will be surveyed and as will have deeds prepared. Um, before we address an actual resolution to abandon that alley. Okay. Do you have any questions from?
No.
Um, is there any public comment on this matter? This is only the abandonment of block two of the hotel. Come forward and state your name.
Good morning, Chair.
Don't be afraid of that microphone. It won't bite.
Good morning, Chair, may I? Oh. Uh, I live on thirty four.
Yeah, state your name.
My name is.
And you can move that, Matt, microphone so it's more comfortable. Crystal's kind of short.
Bye. Uh, my name is Joshua Albert. I live at thirty four oh nine. And when the land is surveyed and these are written up, I would like this, uh, sorry, this survey. In the survey, um, I would like to see that information, but I do not want to partake in funding for a survey. So if someone wants to pay for the survey, that is okay. I just don't want to accountable for payment of the survey. Cause I feel like it would be a good thing to know where the property went truly drawn on after. Cause I've been getting messages on where that line is and I do know I have encroachments. And within the three years, I would like to address that issue. It's my fault for. But that is pretty much what I want to say for the record. The land survey, I don't want to be accountable for payment of the survey.
Thank, thank you for your comment. Is there any further public comment on this matter?
Good morning, he comes over the thirteen fifteen twenty three up right hand corner.
Can you like spell your last name? I couldn't quite understand.
Uh, C U M M I N S.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. Um, yeah, I guess the only thing I can say is like, I agree with Josh Hoover in the sense that I, I'm not against it, but I hate to say that I agree to it till I see where those lines are at. And then if I was to choose to say that I don't want it, I don't feel like I should have to pay for it because I didn't bring this to the table. But I'm not against it and I might still get my own, you know, for my own property lines later. Or within this three years, depending on how it all goes. I haven't decided yet, but at this point on this project for that first, because I'm assuming, I'm assuming the first survey will be going and showing where the middle line is between the two alleyways. And I might not agree to it or might not want it. So why should I have to pay for it if I don't agree with it? And I didn't start it. So that's, I'm just stating for the record that I don't think, and unless you guys feel or anyone can say that I have to pay for it, I guess. That's a question for you guys. I'm not sure if I do or not in order to make this go through, but that's just my thing. So.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any further public comment on this matter?
Good morning, Chair.
Please state your name and into the microphone.
I'm doing broadly. I live with my lovely wife, thirteen oh eight three three, yes, I'm thirty. Um, I just turned fifty five years old and I retired then. I spend a lot of time out there on my property and when I first moved there, there was nothing between the trees and my fence. So I thought it logical to go ahead and abandon the valley because physically feels about anything. Um, I talked to Keith Long, which she lived next door to us there. She was the only person that, that I talked to. Mentioned this to her. She said she thought it was a good idea. So I went ahead with it, not out of spite or anything. I think it's the right thing to do for the whole neighborhood. I've gotten a lot of grief out of it, but I've got pretty thick feet, so I can take it. Um, as far as the question, the survey, our kept survey line up. Ahead of time. But he was like, just what here? Um, he gave us good, good price on the whole project. I am already agreed to put a bulk on it for a survey. Normally he said how this works is if you agree, you sign the deed, then you can pay your share of the survey. It'll turn out to be about two hundred seventy five dollars a lot, which is real, real. Um, that's one of the things I was going to talk about here, but I wasn't here for the last meeting and it's a thing that I'm just straight now, but I won't. Um, I was going to go ahead and pull this petition just because of backlash and grief. Um, this really helps everyone else more than it helps me. Everything I own is gone by public. Uh, the only thing I'm trying to say here is there's rotters on the worst side of my property, on county property. They make a great windbreak. They are nice aesthetics. And I'll go ahead and say, I, I look trees, they're thirty to forty foot mature root tree. But my whole goal with this whole thing was to retain those trees, at least some of them, not all of them, but some. Um, since then, one, the other alley, the whole tree. Uh, yeah, I'm for this. I wasn't trying to stir anything up. Um, I decided at this point that this benefits those three home more than it does mine. Um, so I don't believe and not to worry about it. This happened around that point. Um, I put up the money. I've already got the money for the survey. I've already lined him up. It's a, that's a wrong make people think that I was. I don't feel that I'm a bad neighbor. I'm not a bad, I've gone out of my way, but I wasn't here to defend the stuff last.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any further public comment? Seeing no, uh, further public comment, um, I think we can have a motion. Is it right? Other phone, that's from open.
Okay. Chair pain, I would move to approve the abandonment of the alley, the alley in block two of the hotel addition as explained by Crystal there. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the abandonment of the alley in block two of the hotel addition. Um, if there's further comment, if there's something anyone would like to comment on, on the committee.
And Chair pain, just to clarify, this is a conditional group as we've been discussing. So these conditions will have to be met prior to this actually volunteers on the fact that it's declared. We're both, Crystal, there I have. And, uh, those conditions are laid out in the documents that are all available to Crystal. And, uh, we need to be followed. So should we go back, folks, to that process? Thanks.
And Tom, do you have comments?
If, uh, do we need to amend the motion via conditional approval? I think we're, it's, I think the law provides it.
Yes, that's, that's what it is. It doesn't take effect until all these actions happen. We can't have Christmas until we get to our proper.
Okay.
So we have to jump through the rush.
Um, do we, if we need to amend it, that we don't, we don't, okay.
I don't believe that.
All right.
And this is confirmed by our legal support or advice. Um, this in three years, who knows, any of us, we get, I bet, Ronald may have to, uh, our, our kids or grandkids or our heirs, we have to take over this property to try to sell it. And it looks to me that on its current configuration, um, you might have some problems getting title insurance for it, of course, some of that. So if we can have it surveyed and have it gone through, uh, formal formal actions, it will give a better legal, um, standing of the property down the road where it's from. We're all gone, somebody opened. Crystal, did you have something else that you wanted to say to commissioners? Chair pain commissioners, I would venture to guess that as part of this process, once the surveyor um, gets out there on site, they will set stakes where they're going to be setting wins to divide this property. Um, if there's an agreement amongst the abutting property owners to the alley that, you know, my neighbor's going to get all of it. My neighbor's going to get five feet of it. My neighbor's going to get ten feet of it. That is a conversation to have between the neighbors that will then be, um, when we put on the survey, um, it's not part of what we are going to do relative to um, our conditional approval, but it is a conversation, um, to be had to me neighbors. Um, I will say that I've gotten a number of calls from the folks out here. Um, and all of them seem to be speaking to one another. So there's a lot of conversations occurring, um, but like I said, nothing will be said and stood down until the survey is done and the deeds are executed and we actually have a resolution before the commission, he'll ban this out. Okay, just to make sure I understand this, Crystal, I'm looking at the, um, the lot in the that one up there, very top. And the owner has a property that appears to extend all the way or a significant way into the alley. And under what you just told us, the owners of that, that lot and the lots of the south could make an agreement wherein if the property or the, you don't have to move the building, well, you can make a cap title to that half, but it had to be an agreement to the joining property owners. Is that right? Chair pain, yes, that's correct. And how would this kind of a, an agreement be? Um, um, so that's in writing, I say everything what determines, but Chair pain, it would be reflected on the survey and also reflected on the deeds. So there wouldn't have to be a separate agreement. If those folks have an agreement relative to how much of the alley they're going to receive, that's going to be reflected on the survey and the deeds. Every, all of the property owners are going to sign the survey. The property owners that are receiving the property are also going to sign deeds. Cause they're going to aggregate, let's take this property on the south, they're going to aggregate that piece that they're going to receive into their property. So they're going to have to sign that deed aggregating their land into that portion of the alley that they're receiving. Okay, as long as everybody understands that's the way it is and the surveyor is savvy and knowledgeable, right? Chair pain, I would hope that once the surveyor is out there on site, that we have discussions amongst the neighbors at that point in time when they set some lap up to, um, um, kind of show the folks where the property lines are going to be. Okay. Gives me the information I need. Any comments, questions, information? Anything from our legal chat? Nope. Okay then. Uh, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the abandonment of the alley in block two of the hotel addition. As, uh, explained by Crystal Nance. Um, all those in favor of abandoning this alley indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes before and if that's serving yet. The next item on our agenda is oversee, abandon the alley in block sixteen of Seymour Park. Uh, this two is continued October sixteenth and will be further explained by Crystal Nance. Chair pain commissioners, this is in the same neighborhood. As I previously explained, we had two additions that came together. Um, on this northern property line of these properties, we also have the petition to abandon this alley as part of this project. Um, you received some comment from the folks um, at our previous meeting and I would request that that, those comments be carried forward to this meeting. Um, the staff's recommendation is for conditional approval of the abandonment of this north south alley in block sixteen of Seymour Park. Um, there again, I've had a number of conversations with some of these folks that live out in this neighborhood. Um, they're all having discussions with one another. Um, once again, they'll have three years to complete this project. Um, and we will not affirmatively abandon this alley until we have a survey and deeds reflecting the wishes of the parties. Thank you. Um, Crystal, just for my information, the, the lot correctly um, that, uh, common houses to that lot have on it. Chair pain, this lot has a lot of outbuildings and it really only has one residence on it. Uh, there are three lots here. Each, just about each one of these properties that are developed contain three lots. Some of them may only contain two. This lot here probably only contains two lots. If we click on that, it'll pop it up and tell us. So they have lot, they have lots nine and ten A on that particular parcel. There is so much information on this. This parcel, as you can see, um, we have part of the Seymour Park addition. So we have lot eleven A and twelve on that, on that lot as well. And it looks like we probably have a couple of trailers as well as what's been added on to that structure as well. We have, only have one address point on that lot. Um, the zoning that we passed out here, which is the Fort Harrison zoning um, would include folks from having multiple houses on their lots. However, um, I believe if we look into the history of this, uh, we can see that there's a nineteen seventy two Rover home. Um, we don't know what year this one is and we don't know what, what year, um, yeah, this, this one, this trailer here is, we don't know what year that is, but I could look into the tax information, but I'm going to guess that all of these structures were here prior to the Fort Harrison zoning being adopted. Um, something I'm always concerned with is subject tanks. I assume this is not a city sewer system. Chair pain, um, commission, these lots are certified well.
Chair pain, um, commission, these lots are certified wells of the septic system. Okay. That's what I needed to know, um. There are any public comments? I didn't, ah, okay, well, um. Is there any public comment on this where we're banned? Seeing none, I would entertain more.
Chair pain, I believe we have approved the conditional abandonment of the alley right of way in block sixteen of Seymour Park. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we, um, approved, oh, what did you say? Approved the conditional abandonment of the alley in block fifteen of Seymour Park. Um, if there's any further comment from the commission? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Pass. All right, now to the, uh, final thing on our agenda for the day is item four D. Clear Morello Road and Appleby Court as county roads. Um, this has been continued from October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five and is presented by Crystal and us.
Chair pain commissioners, also on your agenda today is to declare Morello Road and Appleby Court as county roads. Um, we took some public comment on this project on the sixteenth as well. I will pop up the, the imagery. As we heard from law enforcement representatives who were here this day or on the sixteenth, that they treat this, these roads as private roads um, relative to traffic enforcement. Um, and we also had a discussion about in order for these roads to be declared public highways, they have to be maintained with public funds. Um, the possibility of doing an R I D on both of these roads. Um, and then, um, doing tax assessments for these individuals for maintenance of these roads. Um, possibly then could promote the enforcement of all of the traffic laws on these two roads. Um, at this point in time, declaring them a county road um, is not going to allow law enforcement to do, to enforce all of the traffic laws on these roads because they are not maintained with public funds, even if we declare them county roads. Um, we have, I also have, I think. I also have, um, this is, this is the exhibit that I attached to your, um, staff report. Um, this was the survey that surveyed this as a separate tract. Um, this survey was actually executed in nineteen eighty-four. Um, at that point in time, county does not take right of way. Um, so in a, in a legal sense, this tract of land would still be owned by Frank Tillo. Um, they retraced boundaries of the existing parcel to be used for public access road. The county does not have right of way on this road. Um, this is not our land in, in a legal sense. It still belongs to Frank Tillo who had it surveyed, even though he put um, a restriction on this that it is in fact an access road or a public access road for, um, these lots to access, have access to their property. The two previous, um, projects that we talked about, um, those were actual rights of way. There were only thirteen years in the late eighteen hundreds where local jurisdictions could actually have right of way. And so right of way pertains to, um, the Hotel Edition and Seymour Park, but does not apply to Morello Road.
It is, there are questions from the commission? Comment? Oh, we have a comment from Nico Hatch, go for it.
Ben, chair commissioners, I might add maybe there's slight clarification or comment that the board chooses to make Morello Road and the other road a county road, that kind of swings it under the jurisdiction of Title sixty-one citations. So even if the county isn't out there actively maintaining that road by maintaining a county road, that way would then be maintained by the county because it falls under your maintenance obligations. And you don't have to maintain every county road, county standard, but that swing, it's swing the road into the county jurisdiction.
Okay, I have sort of a community or as part of that, um, is, is there a reason that the, one of these lots were approved that they didn't have access off Canyon Ferry Road? Right to the north of them?
You, Chair pain, commission, uh, with, these lots were all created by exemption. So the county didn't have, um, supervisory authority as a subdivision as we do on some of the lots.
Oh, what would the exemption be?
I think a lot of these lots were created by deed.
Oh.
Pre nineteen seventy-three. And Canyon Ferry Road is a state highway. So even if we would have approved these as a subdivision, we would have required access off of an internal road.
So, here's another, um, I guess we can have all this, especially, um, fellow commissioners, so, um, is there any other comments? Questions for Crystal?
Seeing none, is there any public comment? Chair pain, if I may, one more comment. Of course, this particular property right here, you can, you can see that, um, from this flat to the aerial, whoop, whoop. You can see that this lot was divided into two lots. And then this lot actually went through subdivision review. And it was required to have access onto Morello Road, which we know is a public access easement. But we also put a no access restriction onto Canyon Ferry Road on this upper portion of the lot. Now, when they were widening Canyon Ferry, when they did that widening project, M D T, um, constructed this approach here. However, it cannot be used for access by this lot because we've got a no access restriction along this road as part of our subdivision approval.
If they have a fire out there, do the fire trucks use that? Chair pain, see, I would imagine that if there's a fire out here, the fire trucks are gonna get there however they can. Okay. Any other? Anything else you wanna say before we move this into public comment?
No, Chair pain, thank you.
Okay. Any public comment? Forward and agent.
Good morning, Steve Moore. I live at thirty-four ninety-five Canyon Ferry Road, it's been there for thirty-four years. I guess our big issue is, most people don't really want the road maintained. We get law enforcement to do something on it besides shit, your fingers are going, no, 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 you can't do that. I mean, it's ridiculous to watch some people drive down that road. Then you got thirteen-year-old riding motorcycles, driving cars. Could be a safe.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any further public comment?
Jeffrey Roll. I own the land of thirty-four eighty Morello Road. I've partook in subdividing that piece of property years ago. I cannot deny any formation of any R I D or anything on that, uh, Morello Road from my western property line to the east to Appleby. But I am not here concerned about the maintenance of that road at all. My concern is public safety, A number one on that stretch of road. I think the petition was filed to turn that road or that right of way into a county maintained road so that we can get safety for the public on the stretch of road because I got a list of stuff here that is piled up and has me concerned about public safety. And I am standing here today to do my best to do what's right for the public and their safe passage on the stretch of road. A number one is, well, I mean, let me start out with a scenario. I was pulling a trailer behind my pickup truck. And I come off of Canyon Ferry Road onto Appleby though. I was going to make a right-hand turn onto Morello Road. And there were three, maybe four, Loser Clark County Sheriff cars, trucks and guys parked around that corner, blocking my access onto Morello Road. Had I not stopped and asked them to move their vehicles, my trailer would have wiped them out. I need to know if my trailer hit one of those cop cars, who gets the ticket? Or does nobody get the ticket because nobody takes responsibility for public safety on these rights of way? That's one. Number two, you got these high school kids, you got a brand new high school, there you got God only knows how many kids driving. And they run up the valley driving. They see the lights gonna turn red, they turn on Morello Road and they race down that and up over to go, to beat the light and beat the traffic. So they're racing up and down this road and as a concerned citizen, we need to do something about the speed on this road. Somebody's gonna get killed. Anyway, there's more. When I subdivided, Crystal, well known that I was required to bring Morello Road from Appleby to my western property line up to county standard. I maintained that portion of the road. That road is not bad at all. I guess what I'm going at is I would like to go back to the original subdivision. And they required me to redo that road from Appleby to the end of my property, but install a cul-de-sac on that western end of my property. So that fire protection and whoever else could turn around in there. So my proposal would be to close the damn thing right there. If you're not gonna help me protect the safety of the public on this byway here somehow. I'm only here to ask your help. And I want to, I want to come to a conclusion for the public safety of this piece of road. Let me go through my notes, I think I might have some more. I guess not, but if we do have them to be required to form an R I D of this piece of property and, and bring it up to county standard so we can get some law enforcement to do something about this chaos. I'd be all for that, I can't deny that. But I got a list here, Crystal, and I want to hold that whole thing by the book. I want every law, every right of way, every public safety feature considered in the application thereof. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Seeing no public comment, no further public comment, uh, I believe already motion. Andy, why don't you do the motion?
Chair pain. I would move that we declare Morello Road and Appleby Court as county roads. For permission of the discretion, I would say, I would check.
This been moved and seconded that we declare Morello Road and Appleby Court as county roads. And now the three of us get to hash this out. Thank God it's not let us hash it out between the three of us before we go in here. So here we go. Tom, you wanna start?
Well, I, I, we, I talked a little bit with our legal counsel and I, I just like to kind of reiterate, so that if this is a county road, are we, are we required to see that it's maintained in a better condition?
Chair pain commissioners, uh, so within any county road that's under the county's jurisdiction, you have an ownership, I'm gonna call it, an ownership interest in what's going on on that road. So the county has, you know, a road standard requirement, it has a road maintenance requirement. There are other statutory considerations that get swung into, uh, any roadway that becomes a county road. So can we be here for hours if I was trying to capture the whole nuances of county road network right now? So I'm trying not to do that, but if I can specifically be answering your question, once it becomes a county road, the county does have responsibility for that roadway.
Can, uh, and I might, and can we require that, that, that special improvement district where the property owner in the area, um, would be responsible for the cost of that?
Chair pain commissioner, that's a great question. So the rural special improvement district statutes, the statutes say that, uh, the county commissioners, uh, on request or public obedience can go ahead and initiate a district. The county itself though has created a rural improvement district process and because of that process, generally the county waits to receive, don't quote me on this, but I think at least twenty percent of the benefited properties to create an R I D. So that's a yes and no answer and I get that. But under state law, county commissioners can initiate the process for R I D. But in Loser Clark County, you've adopted a process that awaits for benefiting property owners to petition to start that process.
Well, if I, if I might follow up. Um, so it, it would appear that there, uh, it would, because of the process that the county has set up, what we would have to do would have them uh, position the county to, to improve the road.
Chair pain commissioner, all, without having the R I D policy committed to memory, that's general, I think that that is correct, that the concept that the board of county commissioners adopted was to not be initiating R I Ds. From your perspective, it's, it's waiting for, um, benefiting property owners to request that process again. And a rural improvement district can exist on a county road and also be created on, uh, ways traveled by the public that are public, uh, but it don't necessarily have to be.
I have had this same series of thoughts as I consider this. So, uh, the one gentleman made comment that he would be in support of
An R I D. And. Twenty percent doesn't seem like, I don't know how many lots are on there, but. So first of all, if they want to have the benefit of. County. Law protection. They have according to the, the. The guys from the Sheriff Department who came in here and testified. They said they don't enforce other than two eyes. If you lie and recklessly on a non-maintained road such as this. And so if somebody wants them to enforce other moving violation. The people who want that have to step up. Enter into a rural, an R I D and they're going to pay for it because I don't drive out there. So if there's a benefit and burden to so many issues that we're asked to consider here. And the benefit is access to more stringent law enforcement. The burden is you got to pay for your own fix and I don't think they're going to do a cul-de-sac at the end of your place. I think it's going to be, but then. You'd need to, so. This takes some action on the parts of people who live out there. I'm sort of always amazed at how many people think the government should just step in and do something. My golly, that's why we have a government. Well. Our form of government requires action by property owners. Who are like this. So. It seems to me that if our residents out there want the benefit. Of being a county road, they have to accept the responsibility of it a rural improvement district. And it's also seems to me that. I cannot clarify as to who the owner of the property or the kids with that are being. Rowdy and neighborly. But. If the owner of that property is, because. His cost for our I D is going to include roads on two sides. This may be more money than that landlord wants to kick in. So there is. You can take individual action to enable the county to give you what you need. But you don't get it if you're not willing to. Take some responsibility for yourself. What do you think, Andy? You say something?
And did you want to follow? I don't know if you were reaching for your microphone. Chair Pain, Commissioner, I, I don't intend to support this motion. I made the motion affirmative because that's the way. Then you can either go against it or go forward if you like, but I don't intend to go for it. And I think that, and that has been said on the record. Potential alternatives for a higher level of service that is the intent in this area and. I'll just leave it at that.
One more comment. Should people decide to form an R I D and fix this road up? It's going to enhance the value of their property should time ever come when they want to sell it. So, you know, fix up your roads, fix your house. Make it so it's valuable. Are we done? Anything else? Nico?
Chair Pain Commissioners, I just want to add as you talk about law enforcement jurisdiction, so. While there was mention about some of the Title sixty-one citations that exist, again, I'm just, I guess for the board's awareness as well.
You better tell us what Title sixty-one.
I see. So Title sixty-sixty-one, we're talking highway, the highway traffic regulation and aspects, but Title forty-five, the crimes, all of those apply out there as well. So I just, because you mentioned kind of like a jurisdictional issue, I just want to make that really clear that. What I'll talk about are general awareness of crimes law. There's jurisdiction out there for all of that already.
The sheriff's department actually does have jurisdiction. Is that correct?
Chair Pain, correct.
I guess my thought is. Somebody has legal jurisdiction over every inch of this county. And it's not the county police. But the sheriff's office needs highway patrol, but whoever it is, we have law enforcement authority on all of our front.
Chair Pain, again. I, I'll ask a question. I don't know. You can remember. Just an assumption, let's. I don't think there's a very big county road, however, if that did not happen and the citizens chose to. Form an R I D, they chose to maintain those roads at some level. And they were spending public dollars on those roads for that maintenance. And through that process, they. Had put up Stevens, those kinds of things. They don't know that's legal or not, but assuming that they were spending public dollars on maintaining these. Local streets and public access easements that are not county roads. Does that change law enforcement's ability to respond in that area or is it basically the same? In essence, they can respond to a DUI or reckless driving or a crime that's in the neighborhood. But if they're public dollars, the extent of maintaining it then. Is that the assumption that they can respond differently there or not? Or do we even know that, I guess?
Chair Pain, Commissioner Hunt-House, for the record.
Jenny Chambers, give us some clarity here.
For the record, Jenny Chambers, Public Works for the County Department Director. We've had numerous conversations with the sheriff's office in the past regarding the hundred and fifty-seven rural improvement districts we have across the county. We, we do work with those neighborhoods on. If they first need an improvement R I D, so this one would need an improvement R I D and then a maintenance R I D to go along with that. And then we would have appropriate signs and culverts of your age and some things put in place. The sheriff's office have indicated that they, they do look at that jurisdiction a little bit different. For publicly maintained rural improvement districts because it's counting dollars that are collected through taxes, that's what the riding on those roads. Their level of a service and response would still be the same across the county. There's only so many resources to go around. So why we have hundred and fifty-seven R I Ds, we have several county roads across our jurisdiction. Their level of resources would still be a straight or a challenge to, to address those concerns in those certain areas. They're not going to just patrol Morello Court Road. When they have other R I Ds as well, but yes, they, they would try to enforce the speed if they were out there or those type of things that they saw something.
Thank you, Jenny. You know, I'm, I'm wondering if somebody thought about these rotten teenagers are out there, running up and down my road. If you offered them a reward at the end of the month, one of those homeowners out there said. Each of those kids, give you ten bucks, on the thirtieth day of the month, you do not drive your motorcycle. In a proper way on that road. So that there is a benefit to the miscreants that would not involve an R I D. I have to tank the gas or something on that order. So it's not strict, so it's not a punishment. It's for good behavior, you get a reward. I'm a man and a drama. I've discovered that positive reinforcement is a powerful tool. So there's nothing I can do about that, but. You might look at it. Are we done this? Are we ready to vote? All right. All those in favor of declaring Morello Road and Appleby Court as county roads indicate by saying aye. All those opposed to declaring Morello Road and Appleby Court as county roads indicate by saying aye, aye. The declaration of these roads as county roads has been denied, announced.
We need to do a affirmative. We need to. We're okay to do it, what it are.
Okay, so. I have no idea, but. We need a affirmative. We have to declare.
No, I, I guess I've always.
Give us some language or not.
For, for me.
Chair Pain Commissioners, again, so the motion was to approve these ways as county roads. That motion failed, so I think it was pretty clear.
That was a problem.
So you did not declare these roads county roads, so are not county roads.
Do we have to say more about this? Okay. Seeing no more on that subject, we will close it and move it along to number five, which is public comment by any public matter within the jurisdiction of the commission. That is not on the agenda above. We're not as popular as I thought. Okay, well, this meeting is adjourned.